Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the February 4th, 2020 Selectman's Meeting. I am Vice Chairman LeBlanc, sitting in for Chairman Lamarche, who is not able to make it tonight. On the first item on our agenda at 7:00 PM, we have the Carbuncle Property Acquisition. Do you have a town manager?
Yes, in your packets, you will find an actual purchase and sale agreement from the seller's attorney, and our legal counsel has an opportunity to have reviewed it. And tonight, I'm requesting that the Board vote to execute the agreement so that we can move forward with the acquisition. And knowing that we had the townspeople approve this in the fall, the amount does not exceed what the townspeople had put as a cap of $75,000. And I know that the current owner is eager to move forward.
Very good. All right. Do I have any motion on the floor to accept the purchase and sale agreement?
I move to execute the purchase and sale agreement before Carbuncle does that.
Second the motion.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we have three in the affirmative and two not present. Very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then, gosh, Madam Town Manager, we will be next as well.
Yes, well, we just had a meeting last week. So we have a few things to go over, but not too many. The first item on the agenda is relative to the South Central Massachusetts Veterans District. As you are aware, we are a member of a four-town Veterans District. By statute and the state general laws, we have an obligation, if we don't meet a certain threshold for population to have the ability to have either a full-time Veterans Agent and also the requirement of having a Veterans Director. We have been serviced by the town of Southbridge for a Veterans Director, and the state has allowed us to have a part-time Veterans Agent, who you know is Kerry Clark, who's hosting his office hours for our veterans downstairs. So what has happened is the current Veterans Director slash Veterans Agent for Southbridge that also services us is retiring. Mike is retiring after many, many years of great service. We have been meeting collectively, Julie Jacobson, Ron Sanangelo, and now we've also been meeting with the interim administrator in Charlton. And what we are obligated to do is to come up with an arrangement going forward. We don't want to part with our Veterans Agent at the part-time level in Auburn and/or here in town. So this is to actually, we've gotten away with not having to really provide a monetary aspect to this. The current arrangement between Southbridge and Charlton has always been one in which they service Charlton. So Charlton did not have a Veterans Agent, but they used the Veterans Director. We don't have that as an option anymore. So what we are doing is going to, because we're required to post for a Veterans Service Director that is for the entire district, we've come up with a job description as well as an organizational chart that you'll see in there. This does mean that we would have an additional cost associated with that, but not for a full-time Veterans Agent or a full-time Service Director. This is a shared arrangement, and this is an intermunicipal agreement, and it will cost the town about $8,000, starting on July 1st, 2020. We've set the job description and the cap of what the job description is. They will be housed in Southbridge, but they service the entire district. And from our understanding, the state is fine with the arrangement that we have. So tonight, I'd be looking for us to move forward. Southbridge has to post this position. We're going to be losing the Service Director who's retiring in March. So they just recently brought forward the current terms that you see before you. We've vetted at that, and we'll be the first town to do this, but Auburn and Charlton will also do it. And then on the 10th day, we'll actually vote in Southbridge to post the position and include it in their budget.
Okay, very good. Anyone have any questions before we make a motion? Selectmen's have? No questions? Madam Town Manager, so if I just want to clarify, so we have one individual who will sit in Southbridge that will be responsible for administering four towns?
It's not administering, it's oversight of whatever Veterans Agent arrangement they have in each town. And we have a part-time, and Auburn has a part-time. And believe it or not, Charlton also has a part-time, but their part-time is the person in Southbridge, because that's been a longstanding arrangement they had. That's why you'll see Charlton's contribution is $16,000, because that is their Veterans Agent at a part-time level, plus the contribution we would have made, another $8,000 towards the Veterans Director.
Okay. And so will there be, will veterans be able to meet with our part-time agent here?
Yes, and the other thing we made sure of is that this Veterans Director shall meet on a quarterly basis in person with our Veterans Agent. And they are also responsible for making sure that whoever our Veterans Agent is or Auburn's is, that they will actually be carefully assessing that they're actually submitting the proper paperwork on behalf of veterans. And if there is some kind of major issue or coverage is necessary, they will also do that.
Okay. And I noticed that Southbridge's contribution is like $32,000?
It is, because they do not have a part-time Veterans Agent, so that they're doing both. And this is the first time Southbridge is actually separating out the Veterans Services position. It historically has been associated with responsibilities for the Council on Aging down there or Senior Center. And Mike has been phenomenal. He's had a lot of hats he's worn in Southbridge. And as the positions and the statutes of the state have evolved for Veterans Services and requirements, he's managed to meet that and keep our towns afloat as well. But now, they have decided that they understand this has to be a separate position. Mike was unique, and we're not going to get another Mike off the bat.
Okay, very good. Excellent. All right, do I have a motion to accept?
I move to approve of the South Central Massachusetts Veterans Services District Intermunicipal Agreement as written.
Second the motion.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
What happens to Webster and Dudley?
They have their own Veterans Agents currently and/or arrangements that they have. I know that, I think the two of them have talked about, you know, going together in terms of a regional district. So they have covered, we've never been in a regional district, to my knowledge. Since I've been here, it's always been the four towns, and it has been that way for quite some time. But they have their own, and they, you know, they are free to join into, you know, an arrangement with one another. And I'm pretty sure that's how it is.
It just, you know, I know what the state is trying to do. They, you know, they want to appease the veterans. But my concern is, is there enough work for that individual? You know, for the kind of money that he's being paid? And I know what our Veteran Agent does. Some days, he'll just sit there and nobody will come in, and he's only here a couple of days.
And it is a part-time capacity. We're fortunate, our Veterans Agent does meet three times a week, and even on a Saturday, for a number of hours. In terms of work, I will tell you, Kerry will also tell you, that it actually is quite burdensome to find and help veterans produce the proper paperwork, which is extremely important to us in order for us to get our 75% reimbursement. There are many towns, not through any fault of their own, where they have to trusted certain agents to be able to, you know, work with families that don't always come in and produce, and you have to actually visit with them. And, you know, I believe a Veterans Agent can be as busy or not as busy as the person who holds the position and also the leadership or the management that asserts that they should be doing things.
Exactly. And I have no qualms about what our local Veteran Agent does, because you never know what you're going to run into. You know, you may go a couple of days being here and not seeing anybody. Then all of a sudden, you see more than one person, and you may see a person that is really desperate and needs assistance far and beyond just informational. You know, it might mean making arrangements with the Veterans Hospital.
Correct.
You know, there's different levels of work that the Veterans Agent would have to do in certain circumstances. So I understand that. My thing is, I think our person can handle it without us having that person in Southern.
I agree. Unfortunately, the state was dictating to us and having that.
I know that.
But I will tell you that Oxford has a wonderful tradition of really reaching out to veterans to offer the services that they're entitled to. And I say this because we, as a community, have the highest number of beneficiaries. And I know that number can even go higher, depending on how much outreach is given. And you're right, the federal services will kick in, housing services kick in, helping them find employment and benefiting from their veteran status. There's a lot of nuances to a variety of different programs, laws, and requirements. So I agree, the state feels that they should have an overarching Director. So that's where we're at.
I know there's nothing we can do about it. I just felt that I should editorialize because...
Yes. Because you're John Satt, and that's a good thing. Thank you. And you are one of our...
And I see the state wasting money, and that bothers me. So I think we can do it on our own. But the law is the law. We got to abide.
Thank you. And thank you for the support of the intermunicipal agreement. Okay, so we were in motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So three in the affirmative and two absent.
Terrific, thank you. The next item is approval of a wayfinding sign. You'll see correspondence in form of a memo from Sean Deival, our Director for DPW and Facilities. And he has been approached by the Oxford Congregational Church. They are requesting the installation of a wayfinding sign that's near 731 Main Street. The location is within the MassDOT's right-of-way on Main Street, but already sort of has a cluster of signs there. And this vote taken tonight would be the acknowledgement that if the Department of Transportation orders its removal, it would have to be removed, and the church would comply. They are understanding of that. So at this point in time, we're requesting that the Board actually approve the church's wayfinding sign request.
Excellent. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the installation of the Oxford Congregational Church's wayfinding sign at 731 Main Street.
Second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Three in the affirmative and two absent.
Terrific. And the next item has to do a request from the School Department for a declaration of surplus items. You'll see that we have an actual correspondence coming from the School of Business Administration, Justin Laduke and Dr. Liz, and asking us to declare the following items that you can see in several of the schools. And if the Board would move to do that, we would be able to do that. Make them dispose of them and/or sell them and/or put them up, however they would.
Very good. Do I have a motion?
I move to declare the attached list of items a surplus.
Second the motion.
Excellent. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Three in the affirmative, two absent.
Thank you. We'll notify the school. The next item has to do with the coronavirus. I know the last meeting I spoke about that. And of course, since our time we met last, that has been exploding in terms of the numbers of people affected, mainly in China, but also it has started to creep into other countries. I wanted to alert you that the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency has set up on the DPH website, and we've put it up there for our viewers, that they can go to this website and actually get current information about the coronavirus. And no sooner had I already put that on our agenda that today, we also had more correspondence and that we have this on our website along with that link that has to do with our Public Health Fact Sheet. And I would strongly encourage anyone who is concerned about this to actually go to that Public Health Sheet that talks about how the virus is spread, what are the symptoms, the treatments, and how one can protect themselves. And I want to continue to emphasize that I believe, along with many public health officials, that this will continue to evolve. And I'm sure it may not be the last conversation we have about it. But I thought it was important to get that information out, no different than Triple E that we dealt with or any number of, you know, public health concerns. The next item has to do with the Route 20 Reconstruction Public Informational Meeting on January 29th at the Oxford High School. The MassDOT hosted a public meeting, and I just wanted to update you to what I thought was a very productive public forum in which the MassDOT had probably a little over 100 people who attended. Our legislators, Representative McKenna and Representative Frost, had attended, and also some staff from Senator Fatman's office. People asked very good questions. I did get feedback from different residents who came up to me after the forum. My two cents into the forum was to explain that our DPW Director and our Chiefs of Safety, both police and fire, were all very much in tuned and had many meetings and reviewed these plans, and they did modify them. So they stayed for quite some time afterwards with the larger maps to show the residents. So I think it was very productive, and I'm sure that they're going to take that feedback, and I anticipate we'll have another public forum in the future. But I thought overall, it was very good. The next, go ahead. Sure.
Selectmen's have?
Yeah, I just want to say that I did attend that meeting, and I was impressed with the turnout that they had. It seemed like there was more people from Charlton here than from Oxford. But I think Oxford's position was well-stated by a number of people there. In particular, I was impressed with the playing board getting up, talking about the project up on the hill and what effect that would have on infrastructure and lighting in that particular area. And I just hope that they take that to heart, because that is going to be an important issue. Once the 300 units get put in there, there's going to be a problem there with traffic. And also, there was a question regarding Thayer Pond. There were some representatives of Thayer Pond there. And they had some legitimate concerns on the traffic turning both ways, especially at the intersection of 56 and 20, turning left near the Shell Station. They're talking about the number of lanes there, and I agreed with them. There wasn't enough lanes and enough time for them to pull out and make that right turn to get in the left-turn lane. That's an important issue, because that could bottleneck that whole area. There were a lot of good points that were brought up, and, you know, I just hope that they stay on top of them, because sometimes the state has a tendency to find excuses not to do a certain thing because of cost or safety or whatever. And there was also some concerns regarding the widening of the road. I mean, there were people that got up and spoke that have homes on the southerly side of Route 20 between Thayer Pond and J. Anthony's. And their front lawns of some of those homes are right on 20. And they're concerned about the state, you know, taking more land away from them. So there are some great concerns, and I think that there's enough time to rectify the problem, because this isn't going to happen for another, maybe three, four years before this actually gets going.
Yeah, they bumped it out to the real official start about 2022 for construction, but the land takings and a lot of the preliminary engineering work that's done in advance will begin sooner than that. However, that gives us a little bit of time. As you know, we also have a major infrastructure project that we want to have done before this project initiates, and that's our Masswork Sewer Project to connect across the way. I think you raise some really good points. I think that when I look at this project and I think about all the residents that are in the area, this is what happens when major transportation networks go right through your yard or your front yard. And unfortunately, more and more traffic is on the road, and the state has identified this as a major piece of infrastructure that needs to be done. And I did say it that night, that this is a $50 million-plus-dollar project that could go anywhere. What I mean by that, those dollars could go anywhere. And this is the one stretch that hasn't been addressed. You know, there's been improvements that have been done, you know, in Charlton and further to, you know, Southbridge and through to Stirbridge. And we are needing this of some sort. And I think the feedback that Richard Kelly has gotten from our community and from our Public Safety and DPW Director is, they're very much listening on this project, I will tell you. They've come back and modified the drawings and the intention for the design on one, two, three, almost four occasions. So I feel good about that, but I think you're correct in knowing that, you know, there will continue to be an evolution of residents finding out more and more about the project.
All seven, good.
Sure, thank you. The next item is just to alert the Board that the NFP Incorporated that works with the town as an organization to help us broker the best type of insurance rates had recently given your manager an update as well as our Finance Director. Some preliminary indications are that even though there may be some slight changes to our overall employee health benefits, it looks like that some of the other plan changes will allow us to go into this next fiscal year in a budget-neutral position, which actually is a huge, huge win for us once again. And so I'm hoping that we'll have that good luck. And that we have been moving a very small number of retirees who have been on the more expensive Tufts Plan that, as you are aware, went up to 20, went up by 37% in their premium last year. We still had people hold on to it. But we've reduced the number to just a handful, and we have some ideas with being able to encourage them to move off. But that was good news for us budgetarily. The next item, I just wanted to let you know that Sean Deival and I, this last week, were invited initially to do a preliminary walkthrough for the EPA site up on 17 Old Charlton Road, the Old Brennan property. And I wanted you to know that the EPA has alerted us that they're actually finishing up the work. They are going to come back and do hydroseeding and the like. But one of the things you'll see in your packet here is that they have done an awful lot of excavation. When you actually see the property, most of the excavation, as you know, was related to the removal of PCBs and to make this property, which had been formerly the contamination site, completely surrounded by a fence. All of that is going to be no longer the case, because as you can see from this map, and I don't know if we didn't have it up for the public, but you'll see all these little dots. And the little dots on this map relate to the amount of what they consider to be very safe and no harmful PCB contaminants anymore. Some of these ranges of PCB contaminants that were lower in the soil than they thought, they excavated some places in one area to about the depth of 12 to 15 feet. And that's, they did that because they found a couple of hotspots. And in order to get as much removed as possible, they were willing to go deeper. So you'll see all these blue dots. That means that the contaminants are under, you know, one per billion, and that's considered safe. And then you'll see a few green ones where it was between 1 and 10. And that is still considered very safe. It's just that our EPA representative who would come before the Board, remember, he said, "I felt really confident that we can get this down and neutralize and make it, you know, a safe place again." And so they came very close to that, except for that one area in the lower south corner. So anyway, they are planning to continue to do a little bit more work. And we are going to have to, at some point, I offered to say, would they like to come in and talk about what they found? You know, I wanted to ask the Board if you'd like to have them come back and kind of go through that. It was definitely a learning experience. It was a little muddy when we were up there, so that was one of the reasons why they wanted to get it done before the snow fell and it got really wet up there for the spring.
Would anyone, is anyone on the Board interested in having them come back? Could it be a regular session, non-executive?
Exactly. Yeah, not a problem. And I ask them, because typically, these projects can be expended up to about $2 million, and they're coming close to that. It actually wound up being more than they thought once they started to really remove the contaminated soil. And I think if they have an opportunity with their scientists to kind of talk about that, I think it'll make everybody feel really good about the whole project. Number eight, I just wanted you to know that we've just recently begun the Fire Department negotiations. They have a contract that is expiring on June 30th, and they are ongoing negotiations. And I've had our Human Resource Specialist, myself, Katie McKenna, and also the Chief involved in that. And so far, they've been positive, and I just wanted to let you know that as it moves along, I'll keep you updated. The next item has to do with the annual budget presentation meeting with the Finance Committee. As you know, we are required by our charter to actually host a joint meeting, and it's looking like we are planning with the Finance Committee, as we're beginning our preparations on that front, to host a joint session with the Board of Selectmen to talk about our fiscal 2021 budget for March 10th, 2020. So, you know, I'll send out a memo about that too for the members who are not here so that they can put that in their calendar. And you will see the budget timetable that we have included here in your packets as well. The next item has to do with the Civil Service Workshop we talked about. I just wanted to let you know that, as a reminder, I've met with our Chairman and also the Chief. And the date of February 25th at 5:30 PM here at the Town Hall Conference Room, which I believe is going to be downstairs, we are going to be having that workshop. And the Chief is looking forward to that. The next item is just to let the public know, I know I've alerted you by email, is that we have created an Oxford YouTube channel. And because of that, you can actually see some of the Board meetings that are being taped. And when interested residents are in, want to actually find out information about our meetings, they can go directly to our town website. And right next to our town Facebook, they can access it, or through the website itself, there's a link. And then the final item has to do with the annual Boston Bruins PJ Drive, which I wasn't aware of. This year, I am. The Oxford Free Public Library is participating in the annual Boston Bruins Pajama Drive from February 1st to the 15th of March. Our library director, Brittany McDowell, who is nervous short of energy, is requesting donations of new pajamas for kids and teens to be dropped off at the library anytime when they're open. So if you want to do something really nice, you know, every kid loves bringing a pair of pajamas. And if they're little, they like them with their feet, right?
Yeah.
And that concludes my managers report.
Excellent, thank you, Madam Town Manager. Onto Selectmen's requests. Just remember, we can't take any votes. Selectmen's round. Do you have anything? Selectmen's out.
I don't have anything.
I'm sorry, I have to laugh. I'm glad you looked at the phone. Oh, wait a minute. I do, I'm sure. I just have a very quick item. I too was at the Route 20 Reconstruction Public Informational Meeting. Very, very interesting, very full room. I felt like I was at a town meeting. It was really full, and I was thrilled that we hosted it and that people from Charlton drove over here, and it was right here in our backyard. I think it's safe to say that Charlton Street was probably the baby project, and this is definitely the big project. The difference being is that as painful as Charlton Street was, it's a beautiful road now, and it's very well-traveled and no complaints. But this project coming up will be very big. And it's very, I think it's important that the DP, not the DPW, but they did provide, MassDOT did provide some addresses, some email addresses, that if residents wanted to continue to voice some questions or some concerns, they can send them to them directly. And also, they can have, they can wait a response that way instead of waiting for the public information meeting. The one thing that I don't know, Selectmen's had, you picked up on, did you hear the woman from Oak Street at the very beginning?
I did.
Yes. So in summary, basically, she said that she has trouble getting services because of...
Rubbish.
Where her road is and so forth. But she also made a comment that she had trouble with town services too. And I don't know if that was accurate or not. I did drive down the road over the weekend, and it's pretty poor. It's not exactly the best road that we have in town. I don't think it's the worst road we have, but...
I think they might be talking about town services in terms of if we had municipal trash. She wasn't the only one. There was two others who were ecstatic concerned about it, and actually, one of them had spoken to me directly. And the concern is that apparently, they may have tried to get some kind of service, but because they haven't been able to do it, they feel it's incumbent upon the town to do that. Of course, when I was speaking with our Director, there was a time where the town entertained having municipal waste hauling and trash and recycling, and it was not supported by the town at that time. So one of the things that I will offer to do is see, sometimes people think they've reached out to everybody. reached out to everybody. I may, in my office, see if I can make a direct appeal to any number of waste haulers, but then, you know, they also have to want to have that particular provider, and, you know, I think it's no different than asking someone to mow someone's lawn or to plow someone's driveway. This is one of the things we don't do, but I think some people think of a regular service that the town might provide, and in some communities, it is a municipal thing, but it's not here. But I'm more than willing to put out a little bit of a feeler and maybe a little influence to ask, you know, if there's a possibility that they might service that area. And it'll be up to the residents whether they pick that or not. You know, someone might come back and say it's too expensive, and, you know, that's not a decision we get to make.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that there was no misunderstanding that the town wasn't providing services, and not only, granted, we don't do the trash piece of it, but, you know, the ambulatory and, you know, snow removal, you know, and things of that nature. So, and I know that there, that particular street is, you know, you have your road, and then you've got a cinder block there, and there's not much you can do, so...
So we anticipate, when this project is through, well, there's two things, and I actually was going to get up to address the woman's concern about VTA responses, to assure her that our public safety officials were there a number of times looking at this plan. And because of their input, we have a number of places where it will allow our response time to improve. There is more of an ability for us to get to certain locations, there's more pull-offs for ambulances once they're actually servicing at an incident. But here, the one thing that I was going to say is that I do believe that the Mass DOT and our public safety officials will be strongly committed, that once the project starts, that we are cognizant of
Yeah.
Areas that are going to need to be advanced more quickly, or we're going to have to provide some options so that we can assure that the, you know, estimated time for arrival, if there is an emergency incident, that we can actually address it in a way that's still timely and still responsive. And I would say that Mass DOT is aware of that, our guys are aware of that, too.
Are we able to share services, for example, on an ambulatory level, you know, if, you know, if the North Station doesn't get open, you know, if they could, you know, if it's easier, if it's quicker for Charlton to get there as opposed to Oxford? Are they able, are we able to kind of coordinate that?
I think what happens is one town winds up speaking to the other. We do that in terms of what's happening if we had the Cudworth Road that was a problem for getting across. And so there was, you know, obviously, an outreach at that time by our interim chief Blander, and talking with them to make sure that the folks on the other side, you know, were not in peril, because our town couldn't necessarily respond as fast as they used to, but the mutually response. But it's usually about that advanced communication, and I think with this project, we'll have a lot of advanced communication.
Fair enough. Selectmen's out, did you have something?
No, I was just going to say, I got, kind of got the same impression you did when she got up and spoke, but then as she went on, and I think it was, she was not criticizing our response time as far as town services. I think she was really leaning towards the fact that she couldn't get anybody to pick up her trash.
Oh, okay.
And I could understand why, because, you know, it's just like the cable company. I mean, they came into town, they weren't going to do a street if there wasn't enough homes on that street, they weren't going to spend the money to wire it.
Okay, I got you.
And, you know, the trash companies are the same. I mean, if there's
No, I hear you.
They're not going to go out of the way for one or two people when there's a long stretch of area that they don't have any pickups.
I bet you, yeah.
I hear, I hear what you're saying. I hear, you know, it just kind of evolved into other things, too, so...
Sure, sure.
Okay, fair enough. I have nothing else. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes, all three in the affirmative, two absent. Have a great night, everyone, thank you.